Thirty, I hereby call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Announcements, awards, special recognition, we see none. Presentation Amphitheater 2023 Season Recap with Quinn Blitso.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Get oriented here. The 2023 amphitheater season was what we could call a banner year for the city. Tonight, I'd like to share a few of the highlights of what transpired last year and just tell you how we got to the season that we had. Start with a little bit of recent history. The city in 2018 hired PTR after a competitive search, and they have taken over the operation of the amphitheater. They do everything from ticket sales, marketing, sponsorship, production, concessions, talent acquisition, they do the whole thing. And kudos to them for this season that we had. 2018, we also began a series of facility upgrades. Nothing had been done to the amphitheater in quite some time, and it was time to start a process, which we are still in, to upgrade the amphitheater and make it a little bit more up-to-date. We did several things, just a few of them are, we changed the entrance so you come into what is now more of a beer garden-type atmosphere. We changed the color scheme. We replaced the seats. We filled in the mulch picnic tables with stamped concrete, and now we have regular tables there. We upgraded the bathrooms, how could I forget that? We upgraded the bathrooms, and so they're nice tiled bathrooms and all fit into our new theme. The last upgrade that we did last year was to upgrade the lawn seating area. It used to be you had to walk down a dirt bank to get to the lower tiers. So what we did was, we went in and had concrete, stamped concrete stairs poured, they're lit, and there's a railing there as well, so it's much safer. It looks pretty much like what you see there, only it's on the other side, it's not in this picture. How do I get out of this thing? There we go. Oops. Yeah, skipped. Okay, no, here we are. We went from zero people in 2020 when COVID caused us to cancel the season. The next year, in 2021, we had a socially-distanced season. It was quite an effort to figure out how many people we could get in there with, and they all sat within or outside of six feet of each other. But that was mostly tribute bands, it was very popular, people were ready to do something. So for what it was, it was very successful. And then we returned to normal seating in 2022. PTR shared these marketing highlights with me, and I'd like to share them with you because they're pretty impressive. In the beginning of the year, we started with a new branding for the Fred, and you see the new logo that we have to the right, replacing the one that we'd had for years and years and years, it was just a black clef musical note. Facebook likes to the amphitheater page increased by 46%. The number of visits to the Facebook page increased by 187%, and that's not a typo, that is almost unbelievable. Instagram visits also increased by 37%. On the national television program E, which is an entertainment program, they interviewed Belinda Carlisle about her comeback one-year tour, and at the very close of that, Peachtree City was mentioned as the first tour stop, and they said, "The first stop is at the Fred Amphitheater in Peachtree City, Georgia." So he made national television. We had 438,000 online digital impressions, those are similar to, if you go to a Kroger page, you might see some advertising we bought that has a Fred logo maybe in a sidebar or up across the top of the page. Social media impressions, 1.5 million. That's just about a total of all the social media that we did. Visits to the page, if I visited 10 times, it counted me 10 times. So I think that they did a wonderful job of reaching folks through social media. When the 2023 lineup was announced this year, there were almost 97,000 visits to that page versus 2022, when there are 34,000, almost triple. Moving on to the financials, the series ticket package sales increased by 33%, that's a third. Overall ticket gross revenue increased by 15%. Sponsorship income, which is vital to us in order for us to put on an entire season, increased by 17.5%. Concession sales increased by 34.5%, and that's pretty good for a place where you can bring your own stuff in. We had 14 shows with eight of them mean sellouts. These are the sellout performances that we had, and these three pictures are performers at the Fred this season. Pat Benatar at the top is now a blonde. When she went out on stage, it took me a minute to realize who she was, but she's a blonde, and then, of course, there's Clint Black and Belinda Carlisle. So what's now and what's next? Our upgrade this year is an improvement to the lighting structure, which is up in the top of the amphitheater. We are putting in a new beam that will allow us to have different lighting packages in different bands, more and better. PTR is working on renewals of sponsorships and the addition of any new ones. They are in the process also of seeing what groups are out and available to tour in 2024 and are getting ready to start making offers. I'm not sure if you know how that works, but a band will receive offers from multiple venues, and they will wait and wait and wait and see what they get, and then they'll finally pick which ones they want to go to. So it's a big, long waiting game, and the earlier you get in it, the better off you are. The 2024 lineup release will be sometime from mid-February to early March, depends on when we get all those contracts and those bid offers accepted. Ticket sales will start in March of 2024, and we're looking forward to another great season in the spring of 2024. And I'd like to close with letting you know that if you have a band that you think is a good fit for the Fred, you can go to the Frederick Brown Jr. Amphitheater Facebook page and put that in the comments section, and that will be forwarded to the people who do the talent acquisition, and hopefully your band will be at the Fred next year. With that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Quinn, I'd just like to say that my wife and I go there, we saw Clint Black, and you've done a great job at the Fred.
Thank you.
The years that we've been going, I think last year was just one of the better years. You did, I really do appreciate the work you've done.
Thank you.
Well done.
So much fun. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Quinn, it's interesting to see the financials not only followed the great bands that you had this year and the singers you had, so, well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Well done.
And if you were there, I know that our city manager was there, Clint Black must have said at least five times, "Invite me back, I'll come, invite me back, I'll come."
We have several performers that want to come every year, and I believe Mark Martel wants to come back every year. He's the tribute band for Queen, and he usually sells out, so maybe we'll have him back next year.
The nice thing was when they didn't say Peachtree.
Right.
Clint Black said Peachtree City.
Right. It's nice, isn't it? Because we all moan when they just say, "Peachtree, how are you?" Like, ugh.
All right, thanks very much, we appreciate it. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mayor, and I am going to apologize, it looks like we are having some issues, technical difficulties. As you all know, we have been updating our sound and our audiovisual, and the individuals online may not be able to access it, so we're still working on that. So we just want to let everyone know, just in case if anyone is trying to watch online.
For the whole meeting, so our live streaming right now is maybe not?
It is live streaming on YouTube and Vimeo, but it's not live streaming on our website, which is typically where residents go to watch the video. So we are just trying to update that. Yes. So the first person to sign up to speak is Dar Thompson.
What is this here?
Oh, you don't need that.
All right, this, thank you for the, Dar Thompson, 121 Peninsula Drive. As much as I appreciate the opportunity of being here tonight, I do not want to be here. I haven't been here in over two years. I am frustrated. I am frustrated. I'm going to try to stay on script. I'm here tonight to address some concerns and observations that have been on my mind and I believe should be shared with this community. I have been a resident for Peachtree City for over 25 years. I am owner of multiple businesses, I've employed over 2,000 people in Peachtree City over the years, and I hold a substantial amount of real estate investments in this community. I care about the well-being of our city, and I care about our community, and it needs to be discussed open and honestly. First and foremost, the power of the media in our political landscape is an essential part of a thriving society. However, I'm sure have many have noticed the growing concerns regarding the credibility and the objectivity of the local newspaper, the citizen. It has been disheartening to witness instances in misinformation and deception that have been allowed to permeate our local news. It is essential for a newspaper to be a beacon of truth, providing accurate and unbiased information to our citizens. Wherever, when a newspaper allows itself to become a platform for fabrication and lies, it erodes the essence of a thriving democracy. We've seen accusations of free speech and open dialogue being stifled at the social media platforms, yet while in our own community, I've personally been experiencing censorship and the inability to share factual information to refute the misinformation to our citizens. One issue that demands clarification, that I want to emphasize more than anything, is the false claim that our government is pushing for apartments, that is pushing for apartments at the tennis center or any other areas of Peachtree City. Such allegations are nothing but fabrications and lies perpetual by individuals who may have their own agenda. It is disheartening to see these falsehoods are given to platform through the local newspaper. It's critical to separate the facts from fictions to make informed decisions. For me, it is additionally troubling to see a member of our city council, Mr. Holland, endorsing a candidate while echoing these same fabrications and these lies. We must question whether this council member is unaware of the facts, or even worse, are they complicit in misinformation?
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
We got halfway done.
Next person to sign up to speak is Debbie Sanders.
Hi, everyone, I'm Debbie Sanders, and I live at 111 Grapevine Curve in Peachtree City. And I am here to just make everyone aware that there needs to be some changes to our ordinance about dogs. Sunday night at 5:00, my dog was viciously attacked by one of my neighbor's dogs. She ended up having to go to Save's, and she was very seriously injured. When I posted something on our Roxbury Facebook page, I found out that this is the third serious dog bite of this dog. And so the first bite happened in January, the second bite happened three weeks ago, and she didn't, the lady whose dog got bit didn't know that, what to do, she's not, she hasn't lived in the United States that long, she didn't know what the procedures were to call the police, to report the dog to animal safety. And so when the police officer came and took the report, they called animal control, and then I started to find out all these other situations that have happened with this particular dog. I'm asking you, because I'm running out of time, I understand that we've got to go through the compliance issues, that they've got to cite the person, and they've got to do it three times, whatever, however often they have to do that, I know you have to follow procedure. What I'm asking you to do is try to put something in our ordinance that says, in between the time that the serious incident happens and the time that they go to court, so that the judge can decide if this is actually a vicious dog that is not redeemable, that, okay, so I went home today and the dog is there, I don't feel safe leaving my own house with my dogs. I walk my two black Labrador dogs, Belle and Millie, every single day, and now I can't leave my house. The people that live immediately across the street from them have a six-week-old baby and an almost-two-year-old baby. If that dog would have come for their baby that was in the front yard playing soccer, because her dad goes out there and plays with her, and not come for my dog, they could have killed that little girl, and I would just be mortified if this dog bites again. And that dog was back in the yard today tethered to a tree. Now, I called, I've called animal control, I called code enforcement today, I'm begging that in between the court's decisions of what they're going to do about a vicious animal, there has to be some protection for a homeowner who, I had my dogs on leash, I walk my dogs on leash every single day, and I'm scared, and I love my dogs, but they are not just a piece of property that the law states, I get that, but it's a civil matter, and I just don't want it to happen to anybody else's kid or my dogs.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thanks, Debbie.
Next person to sign up to speak is Blake Hayes.
Blake Hayes, 621, and I live at 621 Double Trace Lane. I have two topics to bring up within my three minutes, one good, one bad. I'll start with the bad ones, one, so that I can end on a good note, second, because it's slightly more time-sensitive. We're getting close to the end of October, near the season of Halloween, and something scary is coming to Peachtree City and across our country. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has data that shows that Halloween is the single most dangerous day for a child pedestrian in the United States, and it's not close. Halloween is about three times riskier than any other day. I'll ask you to bear with me as I say this full thought and don't turn off thinking with what I'm going to say first. Back in 2021, you may have seen the articles that mention that guns are the number-one cause of death for children now, and again, I'm asking for the full thought here, let me get it out before you think I'm anti-gun or anything. What's often missed in that article is what they surpassed, the previous number-one cause of death of children in the United States, and now number two is motor vehicle accidents. Pedestrian risks have been on the rise for all ages since 2019, the pandemic. While the research isn't particularly clear as to why, since 2010, pedestrian death rates have doubled and were just as bad as 1981, which was almost 40 years ago, or over 40 years ago. Halloween this year falls on a Tuesday, so there'll be people coming home from work as it starts to get dark, and it's getting dark earlier when kids may be out on the streets trick-or-treating. I'm not telling you not to drive your car, I'm not telling you to stick inside your house and not do anything, but, you know, if you have a chance to put a trip off one day or go to the grocery store the day earlier, or take a golf cart where you're not in a car that can do more damage to a child, and use caution as a driver. The responsibility is not solely on the child or their parents, it's shared. That's the bad news, and like I said, I wanted to get that out. The good news, I wanted to give a shout-out to our Peachtree City Police Department for handling an incident well that actually happened yesterday related to, I guess you'd call it, a road rage instance slash dispute that I was involved in, and I'm not praying myself is perfect in this, I was involved in it. A couple of quick safety requests that the council might consider. This incident occurred on TDK Boulevard, turned left onto there. There's actually not a speed limit posted on that side at the four-way stop where TDK Boulevard hits Dividend Drive. There is one if you're turning right from 74 onto TDK Boulevard, but if you're at the four-way stop on Dividend and you turn left, there is not one posted there. With that, I see that my time is running out, so more to come on that. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no additional speakers. Agenda changes, Council?
None.
None? Minutes, October 5th, 2023, regular meeting minutes?
Mayor, I approve that we approve the October 5th, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries with one abstention. Quarterly reports, third-quarter reports, 2023, any comments, Council?
None.
Well done, I love this format that they put it in, so it's easy to read and follow the topics, so I appreciate that from the staff.
I just want to call out the executive services portion, and this is in our council packet, which has been published. YouTube views, our communications team is on it, and YouTube views have increased more than 500% from quarter two to quarter three with over 100,000 views. Instagram reach has expanded from 13,300 last quarter to 230,000 in the third quarter. Facebook page visits increased 35% quarter-to-quarter with 31,710 visitors. All I can say is, keep up the amazing work, that's just awesome.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, consent agenda, A, purchase of F-250 for stormwater department, B, purchase of two roller compactor replacements, C, purchase of F-150 for building maintenance department. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve, is that the correct term, approve, consent agenda A, B, and C as read.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Old agenda items, we have none. New agenda item, 102305, Gershimer Manufacturing Plant Expansion, Phase 1 through 4. And I'll start, the city codes provide options for exemptions or waivers for impact fees and other requirements as economic development incentives for businesses meeting certain criteria. During the August 1st, 2023 city council meeting, the council expressed an interest in continuing to work with the Fayette County Development Authority to make sure businesses are aware of these potential incentives so that Peachtree City is competitive compared to other surrounding areas, especially in the area of existing industry expansion. Gershimer is looking to expand their operations in Peachtree City to a second facility within a 20-minute drive time of their current facility located on Highway 74 South. Their request is for expedited permitting, a waiver of impact fees, and the use of the alternative compliance utilizing the off-site planting program. And with that, I would like to invite Nikki Van Der Slies from the Fayette County Development Authority to take the podium and give us some background.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for having us here this evening. As I came to you this summer and we discussed what was going on with the Development Authority, we, I believe I mentioned to you that we were going to be looking for an existing industry person to come that would be largely, spending a large portion of their time in Peachtree City because of our industrial base here. I'm proud to announce that we have that person on board. Amanda Fields has joined us as of Monday of this week. Amanda is a Fayette County native, graduate of Fayette County High School, started her career in economic development at the Fayette County Development Authority a few years ago, I won't say how many. But she is, comes to us from the Georgia Department of Economic Development as their Region for Project Manager for Existing Industry, and could have written the book on how to, did write a book on how to work with existing industries. And I would like to add that one of the questions that she asked me when we were discussing this opportunity was, who's doing workforce development? And I said, "Well, I think that's me," and she said, "I love it," and I said, "I think that's going to be you." So Amanda has joined us on our team, we're filling that out, and we're excited about the opportunities. She's hit the ground running and already has some meetings scheduled with our existing industries, so you'll be seeing more of her and less of me. But not while we're here tonight, we're here because of Gershimer. As we know, they have been looking at an expansion, they've had expansion opportunities. I started working with them in November of last year. They were looking at another community within Fayette County. It came to light in the springtime that there was a possibility of a site within Peachtree City, they started exploring that, and continued to consider what their options were. This is a competitive project in that they are looking at a neighboring community as well, and so we have gone through that incentives that you mentioned, of opportunities that they may be able to make the best presentation to their leadership of where they should locate the next facility. As you may or may not be aware, they located their original facility and then have had four current, have had four expansions and are undergoing another expansion currently. So they have grown in this community, they would like to stay in Peachtree City, but we have to make sure that it makes business sense, and so I would ask you to favorably consider their request this evening.
Thank you. I know that we have the president, CEO, senior plant manager here with us tonight. Mr. Fred Howery, would you like to take the microphone and share any information? Welcome.
Welcome, thank you very much. So, yes, as Nikki said, we've grown a lot over the last 30 years, we've actually been in Peachtree City 30 years. We started with about 20 employees, and we're currently around 225. With the current expansion we're doing, we'll be around 400, but the next phase that Nikki's talking about would bring another 215 jobs, with the average pay being $56,000 a year, and it's a great opportunity for us to expand in Peachtree City. Over, early this week, I was in one of our plants in Mexico, and the leadership team is challenging me about this location, why should we choose Peachtree City? We also have a plant in North Carolina that has some great incentives going on, but, you know, I want to stay in Peachtree, it's a great opportunity, great pay, and it's also making medical devices. I've been in the medical device industry for about 30 years, it's very inflation, economy-resistant. People always need their medication, so it's a great job for the community. During the COVID, when, you know, jobs were, you know, closing down, people couldn't do things, we stayed working, we didn't miss a beat. So it's vital for the community, it's vital for the country with medical devices, so hope you consider this and support us.
Thank you. Council, questions or discussion?
If I might, Mayor, we have an outfit here, been here for 30 years, they're expanding not just once, but twice, tripling the workforce, and it's an economic boon for the city, and I think we need to do everything that we possibly can to retain them. With that, I would be in favor of this.
I really appreciate that, and like I said, it's, what we do is great. I met with our proposed customer today for six hours, and they've talked about the future growth beyond this one project, so the growth potential's definitely there, and it's just great for the area. Thank you.
I agree with Mike, Councilman King, looking through the package that we had that they're asking for, I really don't see anything that we couldn't do or shouldn't do to keep a very good employee, employee company for us here in Peachtree City. Gershimer's been here with us. Gershimer's been, uh, here with us. I didn't realize as long as you have been. Thank you for that information. I do know that you've got a lot of employees, over 200, and you're going to get that many more. Uh, we've always wanted to have more employees, uh, in the city, and this is exactly what we were looking for. So I think the things that you're asking for seem to me to be very reasonable, Miss, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah, I, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of this also with, uh, Councilman King and Councilman Dastadio. Uh, as far as I can see from a business standpoint, these are all reasonable things that you've asked for. Uh, we want you to be in our city. I don't know if I can say that any more strongly than that. We want you to be in our city. We love having you here. Your medical products company is clean manufacturing, if I can call it that, and that's the kind of stuff that we really do like in this city. And I looked over the package here, and I looked at all the incentives, and I'm totally in favor of all those incentives that you've laid out here. My question to you is, you've asked for the whole enchilada here, and I'm wondering if you need a little salsa on there, or are we just, are we just good enough where we are right now to make it, make you have a decision that Peachtree City is going to be the place I want to stay?
So, I was actually speaking with Nikki and Amanda before the meeting, and we want to work more with the state of Georgia because this benefits not just Peachtree and Fayette County, it benefits all of Georgia. You know, it bring, in total, it could bring, you know, over 600 jobs here, high-paying jobs. Just the project you're looking at will be about $11 million annually in employee wages, which, you know, benefits the community. So, we're going to push the state of Georgia as well to continue to help us, uh, every way possible, and, uh, the county has, you know, been trying to step up and be supportive as well, so, uh, we're investing, uh, between us and our, our customer, we're investing a hundred and $60 million in this project, and that, that's a lot of money. Yeah.
Yes, it is. Fred, thank you.
Mr. Prebore?
Yeah, so, uh, looking at the break even that we, we were provided, I appreciate that. So it's, uh, the year 2030 or 2031, and that's, uh, that's a small investment. After that, it's, uh, it's gravy, if you will. So we appreciate that.
All right, can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on item 10, to approve, uh, item 10-23-05, Gershimer Manufacturing Plant Expansion, Phase 1 through 4, for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Fred, with one exception, you have to start saying Peachtree City.
I've only been here four years, so I'll take a pass, but I'll get that down.
Thanks, Fred.
All right, thank you all.
All right, uh, new agenda, 10-23-06, Fayette County Board of Elections, September 29th meeting, list maintenance billing discussion. Mr. Prebore?
Yeah, so this was, uh, this was brought to our attention this week, and I, I, I just feel like, uh, it should, it should be out in the open. I, I don't like, uh, things that are behind closed doors. Uh, this is not pretty. I always try to be positive on behalf of the city, uh, but I have a lot of questions on this. I don't know if there'll be any action taken or, uh, what action to take, I guess. I think when we're done, uh, I think we'll still have questions, but let's, let's get the ball rolling.
I, I will say, okay, get, um, I wanted to touch on the list maintenance that you just mentioned. Um, a few months ago, um, we had an elected official from a municipality come by and, um, tell us that, uh, they were part of a committee that was going to bring us, uh, a, essentially a spreadsheet with hundreds of names, um, that they, uh, they wanted us to review. Um, and, um, I'm concerned about, uh, the, the man-hours, the personnel hours, uh, in our office, um, because that, um, because it's coming from an elected official, uh, even though apparently it's not going to come from the, the municipality itself, um, that falls outside of any agreement that we have for list maintenance. Um, so I'm concerned about eating up our time and whether or not, uh, that time needs to be charged back, um, you know, to that municipality, um, because, um, it's, it's going to be tens, twenties, hundreds of hours, um, if it's as many names as, as they project. Uh, so I, I just, um, I kind of wanted to broach that subject as to whether or not we need to put together an estimate, um, of what that cost would be and, um, you know, whether or not we need to forward that on to the municipality, um, to just give them a heads up.
So, I'm curious, um, do we normally have elected officials bring us list maintenance lists?
To answer your questions, no, sir. We don't.
Okay, so I gotta ask a question. You may not want to answer it. Who would, who were the elected officials that brought this to us for us to look at?
Did you want me to answer that, sir?
I want to answer.
Okay, uh, it's Clint, uh, Councilman Clint Holland and Councilman Mike King.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little bit surprised because usually they're here at the meetings and they will ask us questions, and but this list that, that now may cost us a ton of money, I, I, I'm in agreement with you here. I, I think it's outside of, I think we should be billing for that. I don't know how many hours it would take you to look at a list that have hundreds and hundreds of names on it.
Yes, sir, and, and also to add, uh, of course, we're in the middle of, uh, pre-election processes, um, so when we're in this election process is we, we, of course, anything that's coming in like that, of course, if it's something on the petition of the board that wants us to do, of course, we're going to get it done, uh, but, uh, but things like that, those are the things that take precedence, and of course, if a list is coming, of course, from an elected official, of course, we want to, or get it done.
Is the city concerned that we have folks on the voter rolls that shouldn't be on the voter rolls?
No, the, I, I understand.
So, um, I met, um, with, uh, some of the city staff in Peachtree City, um, and, uh, it is not a concern of the council or the staff. Um, the individuals, uh, that came forward are a private committee, uh, that to my knowledge includes a candidate for the Peachtree City Council, um, uh, two members of the Peachtree City Council, and they call themselves a committee and, and an additional person. So, um...
So here's what I would say. We got to be real careful about doing the bidding for something that's outside of the scope of elections or for the benefit of a candidate. We, I mean, Chairman said it early on. We are nonpartisan, we're here to carry out elections. Uh, we got to be real careful about taking on roles that makes us partisan. And so, from my perspective, have we gotten this list? My perspective, that's, that, that's really not something we should be doing unless there's a legitimate reason around that list that, that we, you know, that we should be concerned about.
Yeah, if, if and when the list presents itself, we'll work with Patrick, I think. We all, we would all agree with, we work with Patrick on what exactly our legal options are, and then also, I think Clint and all the other interested parties are reasonable actors, and so if it would cause us an undue hardship, potentially prevent, presenting them with additional options legally where they could get their concerns addressed might be an option. Um, so I think when and if the list presents itself, the manner in which it presents itself and the form with which that list takes actually changes our legal responsibilities. So we'd have to look at the list as it comes, but I share both of y'all's concerns that if it's going to be something that's going to burden staff, um, I'm fairly certain the law protects us from such, uh, spurious requests, so, especially if there's nothing concrete behind, you know, any suspicion of, of any particular voter. So, um, list maintenance is a normal process and procedure. We're going through it right now, so, um, I'm, I'm confident in our staff's ability to get through that and get that done. I don't know that, um, unduly burdening potential voters, because each person on that list potentially is somebody that would be, um, arbitrarily potentially and/or adversely affected in their ability to vote or just cause them stress, so I don't want to do that either.
Let me, let me just echo what you're saying, because I don't, I, I certainly want to be clear that I think that, in particular, uh, uh, Councilman Clint, who has come here many times, and, uh, we've even, Councilman Mike that come here as well. I know I'm calling my first name, but, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
Councilman Mike, everybody knows who.
Uh, so I'm, I'm a bit surprised. Because I, I know that they, especially, uh, they're, they're pretty reasonable around the election process, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, if, if and when a list presents itself, we'll, we'll address it as it comes, inform that it takes, and then, uh, make sure to give, uh, Councilman Mike and, and Clint and/or anybody else who presents any kind of list, you know, a full, full menu of options available to them, um, as well as, uh, a, a clear view as to the impact, whatever request is, would have on the staff and/or whether or not their request is even physically doable. Uh, because at this point, we're getting close to an election, and a lot of what they are asking for cannot physically be done in time, so, um...
Quick thing on that as well. I also contacted, uh, my liaison, uh, to ask just the difference between these, um, two form, yes, sir, uh, two forms of, um, you know, request. Uh, so it, it shouldn't be handled as an open access request, so, uh, it's not an open access request. Um, so if, we don't have a, a, a specific timeframe that we have to get things done with it. So if there's something presented to us, you know, of course, we can charge, of course, um, in this instance here, um, but of course, it wouldn't have to have a timeframe. We can let them know, hey, this may take two months, this may take three, three months.
If it's, if it's presented as a specific legal challenge for a particular voter in one form or another, there are different ways you can present those challenges.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes we're obligated, sometimes we're not.
And it's not a challenge either.
No.
It's just, it's just a request.
Yep, that, and that's what we talked to, I met with Councilman Mike, as we're referring to him now, uh, and, 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 Councilman King, and, uh, met with him, um, actually not too long ago, and let him know, look, um, when you present things in a certain way, we have certain legal obligations, and those are very cumbersome and impact our ability to adequately serve the voters of Fayette County, um, but if you'll work with us in another, more, um, kind of casual way, just let us know, hey, and, and, you know, these are some, some things that I have concerns about, then we can address those in a timely manner in a way that doesn't impact elections, and he seemed amenable to that. So as long as we're following the law, I'm, I'm good with, with however Mike or any other citizen would like to work with us, so.
Yeah, I, but just for the record, I am concerned if it's, if it's to benefit a candidate.
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Very good.
Turn the lights up, please.
I, I have a lot of questions, and, uh, I'll answer them to the, to the best of your ability, and I, and I'd appreciate it. Uh, so, uh, I'll say, was there a committee representing Peachtree City Council?
No.
No. Okay. So Clint, on 5/19, your email says that you were part of a committee that represented Peachtree City Council, okay? Um, the city never created the committee. We agree with that, okay? But what was the purpose of the committee?
The original purpose that, uh, Mike started with was that, um, we wanted to clean the rolls or make sure the rolls of Peachtree City for voter rolls were clean. That was the original purpose.
Okay.
That's it.
Phil?
Let, let me, let me make it a little bit more accurate if I could.
Okay.
Uh, I was approached, uh, because, and this goes back to 2021, about my home having my daughter on, uh, my voter roll in my house, and, uh, she had left to go to college in 1994 and has not voted here since. And that was, that was, I was approached by, uh, the former council person, K O luck, and yet there was a reason, and we got that cleared up. And then I was approached again later, said, would you like to be part of this? So I was curious, I said, yeah, and because I know there is a problem, and for that reason, I went into it at the time, and I think if I'm not mistaken, that was back in the spring of the year.
What were you going to say?
I wasn't going to say anything.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say what Mike had said. I had heard from, from Gretchen that Mike had his daughters still on, on the rolls, and that he was trying to figure out what he could do to get that cleaned up. So I know that's how Mike got involved in that.
Okay, uh, did you attend any of the meetings, Frank?
No, not those meetings.
Any, any of the committee meetings?
No.
Because I, I, you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. How many people are on the committee?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
I know that there's Mike and I, uh, there was Mike and I, uh, there was one, two, three, four more, uh, people on there besides Mike and I.
Can you go ahead and share the names?
Um, I don't know if I should. Is that the right thing to do?
Yes. Yes, it is.
It is? Counsel, to share those names?
That's up to you.
It's up to me.
I mean, legally, I don't know if there are any issues.
Okay. Um, people on there were, uh, there was a woman by the name of, uh, Margaret Ross. There was a fellow by the name of Walt Hanley. There was another woman by the name of Elaine Kilgore, and lastly was Suzanne Brown. I believe that's all, Mike, unless you can remember any others.
Oh, I think you've, you've hit it.
Okay, thank you.
How often did y'all meet?
Twice monthly.
Once a month, maybe?
Twice a month.
Twice a month, sometimes?
Where did y'all meet?
We met at the Republican headquarters in Fayette because Sue, um, Elaine Kilgore had a key to get, get us in for a meeting place.
Okay, um, again, this was all brought to my attention, um, it bothered me, and then now I'm going to say what really bothers me is that, uh, Ms. Ross, Peachtree City Council has a project to complete prior to, to June, and she has obtained thousands of deceased Fayette County residents' social security numbers. And you were on that email too, Clint, okay? And I'm a little concerned, I'm not finished, I'm not finished.
I know, I'm just saying I wasn't the only one on that list.
Okay, you weren't the only one on the list. That, that raises even more concern, because one of them is my late stepson's social security numbers are out there with, at your computer, at your house, and like you said, many other people. So I am very concerned. What do we do? What, what do I do? I'm one of the thousands.
Could I have the date of that, please? If it, if, I think it affects me.
Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. Good morning, Lynn. Peachtree City Council has a project to complete prior to June. This is a Peachtree City registration list cleanup project, and there's more. Thank you. Margaret, Mike, Clint.
Excuse me one second. I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kurt, I, I know you looked at that. How many names are on that list?
Yes, the information that I was sent from staff, there's two, there's two sets of Excel spreadsheets. Uh, one has 3,692, uh, names on it with social security numbers, and the other one has 4,381, uh, lists of date of birth, date of death, certificate, uh, and addresses and names, and they correlate with each other. When you take the, uh, death certificate number out of one and you plug it into the other one, it correlates back. So in essence, those two spreadsheets have the complete information for somebody as far as their name, their address, their date of birth, their date of death, their social security number.
This is all thousands of Fayette County residents' personal information. I can tell you for myself, I'm the administrator of my stepson's account, uh, account. Uh, it's not closed. And now, you, you said you had it, you said a lot of others had it.
No, I, I didn't say I had it.
Okay.
Well, you have it. Oh, that's in here. Those were shared. That's in the emails.
Mike, did you get a copy of that?
Oh, yeah.
It, it may say I have a, but I have a copy.
It may say it too, and I never, I've never seen that.
Oh, yeah. Those were shared. Those attachments were shared.
I'll have to go back and we'll look.
Perhaps check your personal emails since...
Perhaps check your personal emails, since that's where these communications took place.
And I will say emphatically that I have checked my personal email, because all of that was on my personal email, and that is not there.
And I did too.
And I'm not seeing it didn't come through, I don't know that, and I've gone through every one of them. I do not have that email.
And I agree with Councilman King, I do not have that email either.
This was the list you were looking for. So she sent you the list, so the emails show, she sent you the list that you're looking for, because she says she has a project to complete, and she has it, she copied you on it, on that email, and Mike, right? And this is the list you're looking for, and you got it, and then you're going to say, oh, I don't have it?
It was never sent to us.
Oh, yeah. It was sent on Monday, May 15th at 8:45 a.m., and it was sent to your personal email. You were CC'd on the email. That information, over 8,000 files, has been shared with you on your personal email address.
And I don't mind telling you, again, it's frustrating just representing citizens, and it's especially frustrating for myself, because I'm the administrator of somebody on that list. And I don't know what the answer is, I don't know what to do, but I wanted to get it out there.
Here's an email. Lynn from probate office said that you receive a monthly Fayette County deaths report. Four questions are listed in the email. Thank you in advance for the assistance. Best always. Clint Holland, Peachtree City Council, Margaret Ross. That one's dated Friday, May 19th, 2023. There's no excuse for this. There is no excuse for representing yourself as a city council member in using personal emails and intending to obtain thousands of files of personal data that was then shared with you.
The only files that we got, and Mike, hopefully you'll remember this, is we got the files that were given to us by the superintendent of elections in Fayette County. That's the only list that I have.
I have the emails.
And that's a public, I know you have what you have, I'm just telling you what we got.
We can investigate that.
Yeah.
We can look into that. I think that's why Mr. Prehorne has questions, because this is egregious, egregious.
You know, I always try to be positive up here, I always try to paint a positive light for Peachtree City, but, I mean, this is bothersome.
We'll get to the bottom of it.
Thank you.
Your full cooperation will be much appreciated.
Yep.
Do I have your assurance?
Yes, you do.
Mr. Dostadio?
Yes, ma'am.
Full cooperation. Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks very much. We'll close that discussion for tonight. Public hearing, are you ready to move on, Mr. Prehorne?
Yes, I am.
10/23/07, variance for 507 Pine Circle.
I'll read the protocols. When the public hearing is opened, members of the council will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the hearing complete. First, city staff will present the request and provide an assessment of compliance with city code. The mayor will then allow up to 10 minutes for speakers on each side of the issue to present evidence. No individual member of the public will be given more than five minutes to speak. Time limits may only be extended by a majority vote of council and will be divided equally between those supporting and those opposing the issue. The mayor will recognize the applicant and those supporting the issue to present evidence. Remarks will be limited to a total of 10 minutes. The mayor will then recognize those opposing the issue to present evidence for up to 10 minutes. Prior to closing the public hearing, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions of either or both sides of the issue. When the mayor and council are assured that the presentation of evidence is complete, the public hearing shall be ended, and the council may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. One, please wait to be recognized by the mayor. Two, come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks. Three, keep individual remarks under five minutes and do not repeat comments. And four, address all comments to the mayor. Thank you.
Staff presentation?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am not Robin. Robin's out sick, so I'm filling in for Robin tonight. This is a variance request we received at 507 Pine Circle. Go to the map here and show that Pine Circle's here, this little triangle piece. It's in the Golf View area, this, I click, I'll go back, go back. Golf View is the road that kind of circles all around there, back to Flat Creek Road, so it's in the Flat Creek Golf Course area, Golf View area, and a little triangle in the R-22 zone. Background on the property, the home was built in 1969 with the same zoning setbacks as we have today. And if you look at this map, the little triangle on the map is the area of the zoning setbacks.
Would you grab a, do you have a pointer? It may come in handy.
I've got the zoom in. Do it over here, so you guys can see it. So the triangle right here is the zoning setbacks. This is the house, the current structure as it exists. There were no as-built surveys required back in 1969 when the property was constructed. So the property was actually constructed, part of it outside of the setbacks, so the rear part here is already outside of the setbacks, and then this portion up here of the front of the house is outside of the setbacks already. A new homeowner purchased it in early 2023, I believe they're here tonight, and they intend to do a whole house renovation on the property. They hired a contractor to perform a survey, and so that's when it was found that these existing encroachments existed with the existing, the 19 feet into the existing rear setback, which I showed here, and seven feet, 11 inches into the front setback here. The request the homeowner is making is to grant a variance for the existing encroachments, because they're already there, and there was never a variance given for those at the time, because no as-built survey was done. And then also grant new variances, or grant variances also for proposed new construction, a garage right here, and a pool right here. The garage would encroach six and a half feet into the front setback here, it would encroach 21, about 21 feet into the rear setback here, and then the pool would encroach two and a half feet here. And actually, I had to call Robin on this, because I had to ask, like, because it's way into the setback here. But for pools, though, we actually have a different rule with pools. Pools have to be within four feet of a property line, like, they're good up to four feet of a property line, no matter what the setbacks are for that. So it actually is good here, right here, there's no variance required, but right here, and this is City Green Belt right here, so there's actually not a neighbor here, it's City Green Belt, this is about a foot from the property line, right here. They did get letters of support from the neighbors, which I have on the dais for you. We didn't have them for the two-by-twos, I don't think, but we had them after, so those were given to you tonight. If this is approved by council, staff recommends that an as-built survey be done once construction's completed, and then also that the garage be of the same materials and colors as the house, if council still chooses to approve these variances. And that's all I have, and the resident is here.
Yeah, would the applicant like to make a comment?
I'm Bob Barnard, I'm the contractor. I live in Brooks at 493 Brooks-Wilsey Road. The, there is a plat that was originally recorded. Ms. Beverly said she was going to have it in the packet, so I didn't bother to get it, but the original packet, original plat recorded has a 30-foot front building line, has a 10-foot sideline, and a 15-foot rear building line. That's originally recorded, and somewhere along the way, the city changed the very, the numbers on it, so that created even more problems. Not that we didn't already encroach on the rear line, but we wouldn't be in violation on the front. The pool is a different issue, and we wouldn't be on the very front side and top-left side of the garage. We'd only have the rear that would be encroaching if we were using the old setback numbers. And so this thing created, we were going through the process, it even has our front porch messed up. So we're trying to extend the porch originally, and I'm going by what was, my wife got me on the old recorded plat, and then this pops up when they want us to do the survey.
With the new numbers?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. So it is, there's six of the nine requests, and actually, probably one of them, he was just saying, the pool on that lower building line doesn't encroach that variance down there. Number three would actually go away, because we're not encroaching, and Ms. Robin nor Beverly said anything about that one. So our biggest issue is going to be the rear pool, because we've already shrunk it down to a 20 by 30 pool, and that's the only location we have. And then the garage, trying to keep it, you know, setback, and the whole house is going to be, we're going to use the brick, but what we were going to do is use the hardy board, board and bat on the garage to kind of give it a little bit of texture. So, and that's a concrete product.
I hardly know where to begin. All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Thank you, Bob. I'll open the public hearing. Can I get a show of hands of how many people would like to speak in favor? Can I get a show of hands of how many people would like to speak in opposition? All right, I'll open the public hearing. All those who wish to speak in favor, please go ahead and take the microphone. Individually, you have up to five minutes.
Just for clarification, are you the owner that will speak, or are you just a contractor?
So, I'm the contractor representing the elements.
Okay, thank you.
Jim Savage, Lake Forest Drive. I'm a 47-year veteran of this city, served two times on the city council myself. This is precisely the reason we have variances. For a house gets built according to the plans or the requirements at the time, those get changed, they come back and find out they no longer meet the requirements, and so in my opinion, you should grant them a variance to do whatever they want to do, providing it follows their plan. Thank you.
Thank you, next?
Dar Thompson, Peninsula Drive. Another frustrating issue for me here is the denial of variances, precisely from what this gentleman said, and I don't want to repeat. What I hear, especially Mr. Holland say sometimes, is that we set a precedence. Well, that's not what real estate law says, Mr. Holland, we don't set a precedence. Your own ordinance, if you read your own ordinance, is specific to each and every property. So once you've set a variance for one property, it doesn't indicate that you have to do it for another property. What I would encourage this council to do is try to help the citizens sometimes when they need it. If there's no harm, we're sitting up here arguing, follow the rules, follow the rules, follow the rules, but why? If there's no harm, and it's a benefit to the citizen, this, I'm going to be back in a couple weeks on this deck you had, over one and a half square feet, we set a 30-minute conversation dealing with that, then anybody should be able to check off in 30 seconds. I mean, it's getting ridiculous, guys. Help your citizens. If I'm a CEO of a company and I'm watching these meetings, and you keep turning these people down that improved their properties, they're putting $500,000 into one property, 600, and you tell people to plant trees if they don't like their view? Why would I want to move here?
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? Yes.
Could you bring that plaque up, please?
There we go, one back.
I believe you're talking about the seven-foot, 11-inch existing front setback? That's wrong, this is an erroneous variance. For that to be a front setback, you have to have a multi-frontage lot, multi-frontage lot. Multi-frontage lot is supposed to have more than one, more than one public road right away. You don't have that here. You have Pine Circle that makes a loop. That's one street right away. That makes that a corner lot, Section 904. Section 904 states that if you have a corner lot, you have to designate a rear setback, and all other setbacks are side setbacks. So that's a side setback, not a front setback. And your ordinance says that the front setback is where the driveway's at. Now, this is a problem that my neighbor has for the same reason. So this is going to come up to you November 2nd. So what you should do is dismiss this as erroneous variance. It doesn't apply, they are in compliance, or I believe they're in compliance, but that front setback is a side setback, and should be treated as such.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
One thing I'd like to add, I did ask planning and zoning if we could get an interior permit to just renovate the inside, not change the outside, not do any of the add-ons, do anything, and I was told no, because I encroach on everything. So I have a piece of property I can't even do interior work on. Do it illegally, but if we did it legally by permitting, you couldn't do it.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I hereby close the public hearing. Counsel?
I can't think of a better time to have a variance right now. 1969, that's when they, all this was done, and I'm not sure when the current setbacks or whatever were put in place, but I would imagine we probably have 2,000 more of these. And I am not going to stand in the way of a property owner who's trying to improve his property and at the same time improve his quality of life while simultaneously increasing the value of his home and also the property value, or the taxes that would be generated to the city. So I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnard, could you tell me approximately how much they plan to spend on this renovation?
The renovation and the garage are going to be about $450,000 to $500,000, and the pool is probably going to be another $125,000 in addition.
Okay, thank you. So the tax values on it, 420, I believe that's what they paid, our break even for the city is 570. As Mr. Barnard said, they couldn't even move a toilet, the way it stands, if we go strictly by the rules. I'm with Mr. King, there's no reason not to let, he's got the neighbor's approval. I guarantee you, 38,000 residents, 37,700 can't tell you where Pine Circle is. And so I'm all in favor of this.
Mr. Holland?
Pass that to Mr. Dostadio first.
Sir.
Madam Mayor, you know, when I looked at this, I was thinking exactly what you started. Where do I begin? And there's so much going on here. I really don't think that there's a way we can ever solve this by approving or disapproving too much here. Initially, I was going to say we ought to go ahead and give the individual the variance for anything that was being proposed for the new stuff, the existing stuff, but, you know, having heard all of this stuff, I don't know where to begin with that. If you approve the things that are proposed and disapprove the existing stuff, that's wrong. You approve the existing things, that they have to be done, and not approve the proposed stuff, like the garage and the pool, that doesn't sound right either. So I throw my hands up, agree with Mike, let's just approve the variance.
Okay, Mr. Holland?
You know, I was torn on this one also. I looked at this and what the heck is going on here, why so many things are out of whack, et cetera. And now that I've heard some of the input here, it's significantly changed my mind, that maybe this is one of the ones that's extraordinary and different that needs to be approved. And for that basis, based on what I've heard so far, I'm going to be in favor of allowing the variance. I'm not sure which one I'm allowing, the old ones or the new ones, but whatever variance there are, let them build it to the plan.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I'd move that we approve the public hearing, 10/23/07, variance for 507 Pine Circle, with the following conditions. The attached garage should be built of the same materials, roof-
The attached garage should be built of the same materials, roof pitch and colors as the main house. The foundation survey of the garage and as-built survey for the entire property, including the pool, shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the home or a certificate of completion for the pool as appropriate.
Can I get a second? I have a motion in three seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And I read that without glasses. That's pretty darn good.
Awesome. Thanks, Bob.
I do have a question. Bob, can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
I've heard that there's a number of houses in this circle that are going to come, basically, come forward for variances because they're basically built at the same time with the old variance.
I don't, I don't know about who will be coming forward. I didn't get that when I was talking, but I do know that based on what Ms. Beverly and Robin showed me with the original recorded plat, it's going to put everybody in there in violation because of the change. And the best that they could find historically was somewhere between 98 and 2000, the city did an overlay change, and just arbitrarily because they were expecting bulldozing of houses and bigger ones to be built, so they were trying to get ahead of that curve, and that's what I've been told. And a couple of the neighbors, well, all of the neighbors asked me when I was going to start, and I said, "When the city approves or disapproves, I'll know what I'm doing."
It was my understanding that, and this is very much just conversation after the fact, it was my understanding that when those changes took place, we changed our own zoning numbers but didn't change those setbacks.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So the setback is our problem, the zoning number's the same, but the setbacks are what got changed, and that just threw us into a total tizzy.
Yeah, okay.
I guess that makes sense, Madam Mayor. It does. When I looked at the property map and stuff, I noticed the setbacks, and I said, "Man, those are really big setbacks for this kind of property." You end up with a little postage stamp to build on.
Exactly.
And I was wondering, well, maybe they can move things around like one of those little games when you move those squares around. This is not one of those. And this falls into what was said earlier about if it's extraordinary and required and different, then we need to allow variance. That's what it says in the law.
Yep. Thank you very much. Let me just add one thing for thought. The green belt runs down behind four houses right there, and it runs down the side of our property and down Theresa McPherson, down to the corner. People are parking on it, people are using it for growing gardens, they're raising chicken coops on the green belt. In our case, the previous owner put a fence up right through the middle of it, we're going to be taking it all down. But I was talking to Rick Lindsey, my attorney, and he was the previous attorney, city attorney to Mr. Meeker, and he said that the city would, in certain situations, deed that land or allow it to be purchased depending upon what the city had negotiated with the developer. And I'm just suggesting to you guys to limit liability and stuff that's not being used, kind of clean it up. And our client would be willing, because we found out through the tax records, that property was deeded by the developer originally with no payment. I think it was part of having to do the plat and put the, allow the green belt to be there. But in this case, it's not being used, not being utilized, not being maintained, and to limit your liability, we would be willing to pay the surveys, recording fees, whatever we need to do legally to get that given to us, and that in itself would eliminate a lot of our rear problem setbacks. And then you give it to the client. But that's something you guys have to determine.
Topic for another day.
Exactly. But I wanted to throw it on the table because y'all aren't very busy, and you can deal with it.
Hey, Bob, one last question, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Is Alexa and Nathan, have they moved into the facility, moved into this house?
Oh, no, no. They're living with their, so it's a tax, something's going on with taxes. I don't fully understand it. So it was put in the kids' names, who I'm doing the permitting or the permitting in this request with, but Mom and Dad, Lorraine and Jeff Spangler, who used to live in the neighborhood, are the ones actually, January 1st or 2nd, the attorney's going to change everything over to the trust. So that's why we're doing it kind of the way it is, but nobody's living there because they're living together up in Kedron Hills.
My neighborhood.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Yep. Y'all have a great evening.
Council staff topics? Anybody?
No, ma'am.
What Debbie Sanders said about a dog, is that something that, I don't know, what can we do about that?
Yeah, so we're going to reach out, we're going to provide some contact information, and we're going to look into what we can do.
I need a microphone. Thank you, Ms. Sanders.
No worries. The one thing I missed saying is the one idea that I had about what could happen between the going to court and the citation is that if this dog could be remanded to be muzzled, because if the dog would have been muzzled, it was tethered to the tree and it got loose, but if it was muzzled, it wouldn't have hurt my dog.
Of course, they're not supposed to be tethered in our ordinances, so.
Thank you. You're welcome. I will take him.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. We've sent, you should have our contact information, and we'll reach out to you, and we'll have some further discussions on what can be done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Council staff topics? Go ahead.
So just for clarification, Mayor, I know this topic has come up a couple of times. We spoke about it in the two-by-twos, and then we spoke about it in some other conversations, the topic of the annexation study. I just wanted to hear from council and get a direction from you all, if that's something that you want staff to prioritize and look into over the next couple of months, possibly bring up to you in a workshop, the old one, any changes or any updates that you all would want to see in there, and then more than likely, depending on the timing of that, I might look to reach out to a consultant to help us with that process, based on staff's time commitments on other projects. But I need a direction from council as to if that's something you want to see sooner rather than later.
What does sooner rather than later mean? New year, January, February?
It's going to take us some time to put it together, but at the end of the day, I want to make sure that, you know, we don't lose any of the institutional knowledge of Councilman King and Councilman Prebor on their way out to have some ideas on that, but it makes sense to bring that back for the new council, to have some conversation on it as well, but we can lay the groundwork between now and then as to what that might look like.
Are you suggesting maybe a workshop before this year is out?
Yeah, I'm thinking, at least if I can get direction from you all, then I can kind of have a conversation with staff to reprioritize on where that might land on our, you know, schedule, and then I can further bring that back to council as to what our plan would look like going down the road for the next couple of months, if we can get it, just some conversation started, bring it to a workshop. I'd have to lay that all out. I haven't given a lot of thought to it because I need council to give me direction on where they want to go with this.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My only comment would be to know what's on your plate. So if you're going to take things off, I'd like to know what's coming off of this. I'm in favor of getting a committee, or at least getting to the current council so they have an input, but I wouldn't want to see what's coming, I would like to see what's coming off before you just take it off and put this on top.
Sure. And I think Councilman Holland said it earlier when we were talking about giving away the whole enchilada and putting salsa on that. I have actually onions and jalapeno peppers on top of that at this point, as far as staff is concerned. But I would just, if you can give me an idea, if this is something that is pressing, something that you would like to see, then I can work on where that prioritization might come in and then get an idea on what staff commitment might look like. I just need to hear from council if that's something that you want me to look at, you know, just in general.
Go ahead, Mr. King.
I wouldn't prioritize this until January with the new council, because number one, Mr. Prebor and myself aren't going anywhere anytime soon, and if you need institutional knowledge or something like that, we're available for the most part.
That's a good point.
The other thing is, I would ask that before we get this thing started, take a look at what was done in 2014. Because although it wasn't really adopted, there was a lot of good information there that could be gleaned, and that could very easily make a good start to your plan.
Good. Definitely, it could be a good basis from there. They can start from there. It might be the backbone of how you build a new plan by using this old one, which, as you say, was never adopted, but at least it was written, so you've got something to deal with. But I agree. I think I would love to have these guys get involved a little bit, but if you bring it in a workshop, at least they can get an input that's going to be on the record, and I don't know if we've got enough meetings this year to squeeze it in.
I don't think you do, but that's just me.
Right. I agree.
But again, as Mr. King said, we're not going anywhere.
Okay.
You know, we're still going to be involved.
And the house ain't on fire. Come on.
No, it's not.
Does that help? We'll take it on with a workshop in the new year.
Yeah, so if you can, so I'm hearing everybody's interested in doing that, so then I'll start putting some processes together internally, and then I'll bring back to you what a timeline might look like for that.
Perfect.
And Bob, one last thing. Make sure you tell us too what you're going to displace by doing all this work. That's important for us to know.
Well, we'll push it back to the new year, make it a little more workable.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll make sure that you have a full view of what that would look like, so, yeah, thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else? I have one issue I want to mention, and that is, it's campaign season, the temperature is heating up, and we're getting a lot of phone calls and questions at City Hall about questions and concerns about what people are reading and hearing, and Facebook can be a wonderful thing for looking at pictures of grandkids, but it can also be a monster that grows, and misinformation is out there, and it has caused some of our citizens to reach out. So I want to cover just a couple of things to share facts. The first facts I'm going to share are related to apartments in Peachtree City. Fact, other than seniors, Summerby and Hearthside, I don't think we've built apartments in Peachtree City since 2000, 2001. Camden?
Camden's the last one that I know of.
In 2001. There are no apartments proposed, there are no proposals in the pipeline. I don't know anybody up here who wants more apartments in Peachtree City. Two years ago, I enumerated that we had 1,760 units in Peachtree City, 14% of our number of households. The national average is 15%. We're not out of whack. We're not short apartments, we don't need more apartments, and there are none coming. Second thing I want to clear up is LCI. People are, there's a lot of misunderstanding about there, and people are asking questions about an LCI. A livable centers initiative means a municipality reaches out to the ARC to do a project together. And some municipalities like doing a project with the ARC, they like doing an LCI, because oftentimes it means money for your project. The ARC is how we leverage federal dollars to come into our municipalities. Fayetteville has done a couple, Tyrone is finishing one right now. Three or four years ago, before I was elected mayor, the previous city council engaged with the ARC to do an LCI study. It was cut short, there were no deliverables to that study, and it died on the vine, I believe it was 2020. The only LCI we have had in recent memory died on the vine in 2020. It's over. It's not coming back. Nobody's bringing that back.
If I might, Mayor, what that study did bring the city at a very reasonable cost was a marketing study for the entire Huddleston Road area, which was kind of the impetus for getting involved in it.
Yes, yes.
Let me add to that, not only for Huddleston Road, but for the entire city.
Yes.
So it was a marketing study that we did receive that did have value.
Next.
That's what I was talking about, with institutional knowledge between these two.
Yes.
Certainly.
Next, the tennis center. We've been fielding questions from citizens who think we're getting rid of the tennis center. We are not getting rid of the tennis center, we are improving the tennis center, and we are spending thousands of dollars right now as we speak to improve. If you haven't seen it, go up and look at the new lobby, the new floors, improvements in the bathrooms. We have completely renovated the office areas downstairs in the tennis building. Next, we're going to take a look at the secondary building and see what we need to do to improve it and restore it. So the tennis center is a jewel in our crown. It's a renowned facility in the southeast. We're keeping it, we're fixing it, it's not going anywhere, and it's not at risk. Next, urbanization. Oh my gosh, what is that? What are we doing? What's going on? I'm tired of the questions. Peachtree City is a planned community with a very responsible, comprehensive plan. Our latest comprehensive plan update was done last year, and it was driven by a citizen committee. I don't even know the evils that lurk behind that word, urbanization, but don't be fooled. We all moved here for the villages, the paths, the green space, and the careful planning, and that's the way it's going to stay. And then finally, I definitely want to talk about this one, because I have actually heard about a communication to the HOA, the Homeowners Association of Plantara Ridge, someone was afraid that they're putting, "We, we are putting residential on Huddleston Road." I want you to raise your hand up here if you want residential on Huddleston Road. And there you have it. Nobody up here wants residential. It's not happening. So Huddleston Road lacks sewer, Huddleston Road lacks stormwater, Huddleston Road lacks safe golf cart path, and it's important that we upgrade, install improved infrastructure on Huddleston Road to serve the businesses and industries that are already there. It's a very important project. It's right around the corner, we're going to start in a few months. I'm very excited about it, and there will be no residential. Does anybody have any questions about those? Thank you for the opportunity to share the facts. Do we have executive session?
Yes, we need to discuss pending or threatened litigation.
Then Mayor, I'd move that we adjourn to executive session for pending or threatened litigation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are in executive.